Later in our discussion, we'll have a slide on instructional practices. But we're going to like to kind of give a little bit of their day or summary of how they use them.
One of the ways that we've been using the technology in the music classrooms and in my classroom especially the orchestra, we have to tune our strings every day, sometimes two, three times with this weather. It makes them go crazy. Each of my high school kids has an app that's called. I look at it every day. Anyway, it was free last year. Now it's a paid app. So the kids had downloaded it last year like they were supposed to have it now. And then Laney was very, I was reforcement to have Laney help me. She downloaded some on for the middle school iPads and I've been able to use those in the middle school classroom. It helps them to learn to tune their own instrument. We have less broken strings. They're using, usually what I do in the middle school classroom is I play the pitch on my iPad and then each of the kids has an iPad on their stand and they can see, there's a green light. And if it's green, then it's good. If it's red, it's high. If it's red down here, it's low. And so the kids can, and they can all see what everybody else is doing. There's only one person playing at a time. And so they can see, oh, no, you're too low, go to right. You're too high, go to left. So they're coaching each other and it's been kind of fun to watch them. And they're real picky. Like they, they'll turn it until it's right exactly in the middle. So it's, it's fun because it's teaching them to be very picky about whether they're playing in tune or not. Because we know string players that don't play in tune, that's bad news. That's bad news. So that's one way that we've been able to use them. I've got kids that are composing music. I've got kids, they're downloading other free apps. They've, I've got various, there's other variations of the free tuning app they've found. I've got the ones that are little bow ties and the green is in the middle and the one side is red and the other side is red. And so they want to get it in the green. But it's, it's all the same variation of a, a different variation of the same thing. So, but that's one way we're using it and it's been really helpful because the kids can tune themselves a lot faster.
But I do want to congratulate you.
Oh, thank you.
I think what's, one of the things I did in summer is where I watched her tune the kids in the classroom. She had to go to her kids. And when she came to me with this idea, she said, it can all be done at once. Think about how much more practice can a kid, they can take at home and do it. And it's been really, it was not anything we ever thought would happen with an iPad. And yet she came up with this plan and it's worked out really well.
And it's also being used in the band. I was in there the other day. Okay, stop, listen. And so again, the time-saving element of that is just unreal.
Mark, you want to share with us?
I use this app. It's called, like a flash card that you can actually use. I'm a science teacher at Easton High School. So there's a lot of technology that we discuss inside physics. So example would be this one, like yesterday where it's talking about forces. So this actually, it's very interactive because it allows them to create their own card in the same time, give the pronunciation. And then if they could actually play a game, like for instance, this one, then they can scatter and start gaming. So if they can manage the word, earlier it was mentioned that vocabularies are key for us, like special and all of the words. So unlike this one, so anyone who would like that say, or vocabulary is already, is this, is it on that one here? And it's, okay, then they match up. And then get in the back. Review, reactivating prior knowledge.
What are some of the apps you're using in your classroom?
Before I use this one, I do have lots of apps. This was for, for students, especially basically have a lot of equations, like long equations. Just like this afternoon, I was talking about it in the accelerated motion and just like long equations. Like they plug in, like say, energy is equal to, say, 24 squared. So I perform the operation for them. So, say, four squared plus three equals. It's right. And there's also. And Scott Physics Airway, this one, they want, say, formula for force, mass acceleration formula. If they are, they just put in the numbers, it does the computation for them. So some of the apps.
I have a question. Sorry, on the iPad, right? There's no need for any access?
Not on that one. There are, there are some. Now, the one that we're showing you that we're kind of demoing here, this near one, it runs through the internet. But that's in class activity. And the one he was showing, that's outside. And the one Summer talked about, there's no internet required for that one either. I think the teachers are doing a great job of talking more about this, finding free apps. I think Mark, I think all of those were great. I know they were. And, and all but one of Summer's was great. She was one that had to come along.
Okay, we're gonna, one thing we wanted to do is provide some data to kind of demonstrate what the progress in this process has been. This is one thing that I thought we felt like we wanted to see was how our students feel like they're using it, how our teachers feel this process is going with their integration. And so we picked out these four pieces of data that we've been surveying students and staff throughout this year. And we're going to continue those studies. We did teachers. We did their survey in October. Our plan is to do that again during finals and then again once in the spring, just to kind of gauge, you'll see some of the questions we asked them, what their feelings are about their own personal integration, how they're using the iPad in their classroom, how comfortable are they with it, how often they're using it, those kinds of things. We did the students. We actually just did those last week. We received quite a few responses, a little over a thousand responses. We did those electronic. We will do them again as well. Second semester, just began to get another set of data that we can kind of see. Are we seeing some growth in what students feel? And the questions were very similar. How are they using them? When are they using them? Those types of things. And we're looking at a lot of their data tonight. We do have some information from the walkthroughs, which are done by the principals and the instructional coaches that go around and those are, Darren's been talking a little bit about those. And then Renee has some information just on discipline statistics with the iPads, how that's being done in the classroom and some information about how we've made some changes there. So. The first one is the teacher's survey data. Like I said, we gave this in October. Eighty-one percent of the teachers rated themselves average or above average in using the iPads in their comfort level with that. I think that is telling with the number of professional development opportunities. We've given them just time, having their hands on the device. They had the summer to work on them as well. So we kind of expected that to go up because of just the amount of time that they have. If you've used yours, you've found the more time you spend on it, the a little bit more comfortable you get with how to use it. And we've seen that reflected in their classrooms, that they're becoming more comfortable letting the kids do different things on it. Sixty-seven percent said they're using them daily in their classes. And we'll kind of see how that's done, what that looks like for, from the student's point of view. We didn't have them break it out as to how they're using it, whether it's note taking or turning in assignments. We probably need to have the teachers maybe break it out, how we use them. We had the students do that. So we'll look at that as well. We've referred to the SAMR model a number of times throughout our iPad implementation. That's the strategy we're using for integration. We have a quiz for you real quick. Turn the page before this gets answered. What are the four levels of the SAMR model? You're going to get popped up on your screen there. You're going to get four or three answers, I think, that you can select from. Your names are up here, so try a little harder. So the right answer is substitution, augmentation, autification, and redefinition. The levels go, they get more difficult as we go forward, actually, more integration as we go forward. Substitution is that note taking, still could do paper and pencil if we had to, kinds of things. All the way up to redefinition where really if you don't have the iPad, instruction stops because you've integrated so much into that particular lesson that if we came in and said, oh, we've got to take those out for the day because you've got to work on something, you wouldn't be able to go on with your normal lesson the way you had planned it at that level. So this is how the teachers ranked where they spend most of their time.
Oh, I interrupted you.
No, go ahead.
I just, we all agree that we don't want a hundred percent saying their students use the iPad daily in their classes. This tool doesn't apply to every environment. And so I, I look at that as a number. And I don't want anyone to think that we're trying to push this in an area where it doesn't belong.
I think you're going to see in some of the other data we have that, let's say, a kid says they never use their iPad in certain classes. There's a reason, right? Because it's P E class. So, and we don't want a hundred percent. It shouldn't, there's a lot of different ways and there's lots of differentiation. And it's just a tool to be able to do some of these things. And when we talk about these levels, it's not that substitution is bad. When we look at this hierarchy, substitution isn't bad. There's a lot of great benefits to substitution. And we're going to share some of those with you. And you don't want to do all redefinition because that becomes this very complex big process and you would spend so much time, you wouldn't tackle the other things. So it should be a nice distribution, if he's quite honest. So you're right.
And this early in our adoption, I mean, we're in our second year for first part of our second year. We do expect it to be a little more weighted towards the bottom or middle versus the top. This is how teachers reported, they spend most of their time in those levels where they're building their lessons. So we do expect it to be a little more because they're still learning that process of how do I get into this redefinition? How do I get to that point with a lesson I already created last year? I redone it this year. I thought I was higher, but no, it only got me here in the middle. What do I do to that next step? What is that next step I take? And so that's the professional level we're kind of looking at, building as we go forward, how to get them. Some of the teachers just go, I don't, I don't know what that, I don't know what to do to go to that next level. I, I know I'm supposed to and here's a great activity I can do it with. I just don't know what to do to get to that next point. So. So now we have some, this is the student survey data that we gave. Like I said, we just did this in the last week here. We had students do it during mentoring time through the iPad. They played everything online. So you want to lose or you want to go out. So the questions, you can kind of see on there, do you believe the iPad has improved your learning? We felt sixty-four percent said yes, they do feel like it's improving their learning. And having teachers provided you with any training on using the iPad, sixty-one percent said yes. We think most of that, or a good portion of that's probably at our freshman level because they do quite a bit of that introductory getting kids into the iPad. This was the first year, this year's freshmen were in the grant when we've done our very first iPads since seventh grade. So these kids actually have had some experience, but not that one-on-one. And they haven't used all the apps that we use at the high school. So there is quite a bit of training there. But, you know, like Mark said and Summer said, there are specific apps for each class. And it takes some training within those classes to get kids familiar with what I want to use that app for versus what you might use it for in another class. And if you have any questions about that, just stop. And how many of your A classes use the iPad for learning? Overwhelming, five to eight is a good two-thirds of our graph, say that they're using it in at least five or more of their classes. And then during class, what percentage of the period is spent using the iPad? Again, overwhelmingly, half or more of the class time is being spent on the iPads in some way. Again, I think this is what you were hitting to, where is, this isn't going to be a hundred percent. I mean, we probably really don't want it there because there are a number of things we still need to do without that. But our target isn't going to be a hundred percent that you're using it every single day. What is your comfort level in using the iPad for creating projects? We expect kids to rank themselves much higher than our teachers probably would. And they did. Four and five were, again, over two-thirds of our, our information there. Students are very comfortable with the device. It's just part of the world. That's kind of what we expect. And how do you use your iPad during mentoring? We asked this question partly because we see spikes in our bandwidth during that forty-five minutes. And so we wanted to know what kids are doing. They're all doing it at the same time. So that's one thing is we've got two thousand kids with time to do something. They could check all that apply. So they, there was multiple answers here that they could find. But you see that the top two were checking their Skyward, which would be checking into their grades and missing work, those kinds of things, and then working on homework of some kind. We did ask this to specify what kind of homework they're doing. One thing we did know, we have a lot of teachers who want to know about games and they ask a lot of questions about how often kids are playing games. It is a high percentage, but it's much lower than the actual educational stuff that they are doing on those devices during that time. And we didn't have them specify what other was. I think they had the option to specify what they meant by other, but I don't think any kids actually put what they meant by other.
So what do you think they meant by other? Sending emails or?
Sending emails. I mean, there's a number of, just surfing the web. We didn't put just surfing the web. We kind of were very specific. We picked watching videos because of the bandwidth that we've seen the little spikes during that time. So we wanted to know, are they getting on and watching a lot of video? And they're really not. That's not a very high percentage, honestly, of watching educational videos or even entertainment videos. There's just not a lot of opportunity for them to do that based on the filter that we have.
I just, the checking Skyward is really interesting to me because it seems to indicate that maybe the students are taking more ownership over, over their assignments and their work and not, not waiting until something happens that they get their grade card. So I think that, to me, looks really good.
And I think it's also an opportunity, Renee, and James, I'll speak to him more. I think it's also indicative of what our mentors are doing during that time. They're encouraging kids to get on, if you've got low grades, get on, let's figure it out. So there is some of that, you know, support that they're getting from the staff members in the room with them going, you need, let's do that. Maybe they're doing that first. Let's get in. Grades are good, okay, go do something else. You know, if your grades are good and you're not going to miss any work, then it's still okay, you know? Find something to do. You know, if we're moving in the right direction and we're being successful, then some of these other things that we put on here, I don't know that we have it properly, as long as we get the other things accomplished the way they're supposed to.
Which I want to remind you, this is mentor time, which is really one of our times where they have some free time. And it's not a regular class time and that's what's going on. So we all love mentoring. So is mentoring kind of like a study hall time?
A lot of people ask students if it's a study hall.
They have, they have meetings, club meetings, we'll meet at that time.
It's during school, right?
It is.
No, it's during the school day.
But it's not a whole block. It's part of a block. So it's not an hour and a half.
It's right after lunch before they go that fast hour of the day. And they're allowed to travel.
Right.
If they need to make up a test, get clarification on an assignment, they can meet with specific teachers and that time is built into the day. We don't have control over kids' time outside of the school day. So we try to utilize whatever time we possibly can afford inside of the day to provide support.
The other things that we've seen some of our teachers doing, it'll change, that's all right, don't worry about it. With the apps that we have between Skyward and a couple others that teachers can administer tests and those kinds of things, if they communicate with that mentor teacher that that kid sits in, if I missed your class yesterday and you took a quiz, with some of the apps we have, I can assign that quiz to you and you can take it and you don't have to come see it. You just need to complete it. So I can, you know, email, Michelle finds and say, hey, Johnny's going to take this test. You might just monitor him while he's taking it, make sure that his notes are up, this kind of thing. And as they're communicating that, then there is no need for them to travel just to go take a ten-minute quiz and then they're sitting there for thirty minutes. If you get the quiz done, you can stay in the mentor class. So that we've done on Skyward as well with some other apps.
This is Casey, this is a link to Skyward. Skyward's that system that also is a way of this teacher to communicate with the student assignments. We've got all these assignments really on Skyward?
Probably, it depends on the teacher, I guess. Renee might be able to answer that. I think you're asking, how much of the work is actually showing up in Skyward versus what you're giving?
Yeah, as far as them being able to use the tool to check on where they are in the classroom, we still have that interface between the teacher and tools.
And we probably could have put eBackpack on there. And I think you would have seen a higher percentage of our kids checking eBackpack as much as they are checking Skyward because more than likely, more assignments that they need to do are probably in eBackpack. So probably going there to get that versus Skyward, they may just be checking their grade kind of scene, what might be missing. But once they see that, then they want eBackpack to get the work and then do those things. And some of that work may not show up in Skyward because the teacher just assigned it, hasn't looked at the grade book yet there. So I think if we had put eBackpack in there, I think we would have seen a higher percentage of kids repeating in there during that time as well.
See, I'm just being a parent here, but I kind of want to go in, in Skyward and see how they're doing with their assignments and really where I need to be going is eBackpack.
Skyward's the grade though. eBackpack is the work.
Right.
The work's delayed.
Exactly. If you want to know what they're doing now, eBackpack. And our counselors have done a better job this year. I think we've made it more aware for parents that they have a code that parents can get, or we gave that counselor access to get that code out to parents. We can't mask do that. We tried to do it in masks. We just sit at home, there are the kids. But if they call and get that code, then they can walk in and see that from the parent side as well.
But the eBackpack also saves the teacher because the homework's there. How many times kids come to teacher, I missed this. They go digging through papers, find out if they missed it. It's there. Kids have to go to eBackpack and there's that time to start with.
No excuses.
No excuses.
As long as, I think, like my son ran into a situation, tried to do the work on eBackpack. But apparently you can't save on eBackpack. You're supposed to bring up another, you know, whatever utility software and work off of that and then send it back. And then put it back. You know, the lazy approach was pull it up on eBackpack and do it and submit it. But there's no saving, there's no record. And if you didn't do it right, you're lost.
Let's get to our next.
It was a freshman thing.
So this is, just a couple more questions here. How often do you use the iPad in class? We'd separate this by core and electives and kind of see why. Our core classes are using them daily. We separate the electives because a good portion of this thirty-three percentage are things like P E, their computer electives. Those two combined will probably have the two-thirds of that thirty-three percent or between P E and computers. Mark's actually using it a little bit more. You'll see kind of how they're using it on the next slide. That's, that's interesting as well. So this is kind of daily uses versus never using it in class whatsoever. And then this question asks how they're using it. Again, we divided by core and electives, so English, math, high social studies. So note taking and research, those are those. Substitution, if you remember, forty-five percent of our teachers said that's where their primary, part of their lessons are being used in, which would be these two categories. So we would expect that to be high based on the way teachers rank themselves. Our students are kind of seeing that the same way. The electives, you can see on the other side, the percentages are a little different in how they're using them. I like the thirteen percent being a little higher than the electives because those are more of your creating kinds of classes, your music class, your art class, industrial arts. So you would expect those electives to have more project-based kinds of lessons inherently in their curriculum versus math or science, social studies, those kinds of work. We still can do them here, but part kind of lends itself to being a project-based class. All right. So we have some quiz questions for you. First is, what is the most downloaded app on staff iPads besides the ones we have, not the ones we've installed?
I think you can see why the teachers like this immediate feedback. You can see immediately if you need to do some reteaching, if everyone understanding. We didn't teach you this, but we can immediately see that there's some candy crush folks in this room and probably candy crush teachers. But actually, present is the number one app.
This is a presentation app that we've used. We kind of demoed it. The coaches demoed it with some lessons we presented to teachers. It's PowerPoint, kind of out sterile. It's unlimited space, so they can fly all over the, all over the place. So this is the number one teacher app right now, downloaded on, currently on iPads. So next question then is the same thing, like for students. We gave some different answers here. Okay, so this is the top app, Socrative. That is a. And no, we had no prizes. We shouldn't have prizes.
I think if, if we would have grouped all the calculator apps together, it probably would have been, but you saw Mark talk about the script calculator. And there's a graphing calculator. And there's a, I'm not a math person, but there's some other calculators. And the kids all would pick the one that worked best for them and what they needed for that class. So probably it would have been calculator. So it's kind of a trick.
Socrative is a test-taking, quizzing piece of software for that immediate feedback, kind of like the Flickr systems. If you've been in a classroom where they're using the Flickers, the iPad is now used as that Flickr system. So they, and this is one, Socrative's one where you can build a test and give it to them anywhere. So I can open that up. It's open note, I can say, you can take the quiz tonight when you get home or take it during mentoring, whatever it may be, because they can take that quiz then from anywhere. They sometimes have the password for it. So I'm surprised our teachers don't have more Socrative. It wasn't ranked at the top five, but it went to rank for teachers. So, but our kids have it a lot. So this is Darren's section on the line.
We, we pride ourselves on being data-driven. And so you've seen data from teacher surveys, you've seen data from student surveys. And each, they give a little bit different picture each one. This is the walkthrough data. And it's really interesting. It raises more questions, I think, than it answers. Walkthroughs are done by principals, by instructional coaches. And they're just five to ten-minute snapshots of what they see in the, in the classroom. So they will go in and say, at what cognitive level are kids working? Are they working at knowledge-based things or are they doing something more creative, that sort of thing? One of the questions we ask this, this year on the walkthrough, actually two questions. Are teachers using the iPad for instruction and are students using the iPad? And we're seeing an interesting trend. And I'm not sure what it means, but it ra, as I said, it raises questions. This is a journey, not a destination, as James said. What we've seen is the walkthrough data is showing a decrease over the course of the school year in the use of iPads in class. I, I don't know why. This just came to light really at the end of November when we looked at this data. So it's very new. But it's something that we're going to explore more deeply. Is it truly that they're using iPads less? Teacher surveys, student surveys seems to say, no, that's really not it. Is it that kids are using them, that, that education goes beyond the four walls of a school? And they're using them in new and different ways? And it's happening outside and it's not something that principals, when they walk in, see? I don't know. Is it that there's something about the cycle of a school year that at this time of year, there's a decrease for some reason? Don't really know. But the neat thing about data is it will, it will raise some questions that we will now try to answer. This is also our baseline here. So we don't have any history to know in terms of this data for walkthroughs, is this a pattern that repeats itself year after year? Or is this something that is an abnormality? We just don't know. But the question it raises is one that we're going to be looking into more deeply as time goes on.
I would like to say, did get our attention.
Yeah.
While we were in a meeting with Dr. Jen, I'm like, well, that's what generated the question. Well, let's really ask our staff. Let's ask our students. And so that data did not follow what we saw here. So again, it's raising questions and causing us to investigate more. Another reason could be, like Darren was saying, there are five to ten minutes. The presentation by the teacher could have been later, students used quicker. So it has a lot to do with when we come into the room also, the coaches and the teachers.
So based on that trend, the teachers won't eat iPads second semester?
You know, the teacher usage is lower. We talked about that. We gave them four-foot by seven-foot projection screens to, so they're not teaching like this with their iPad in their hands. So when I walk in the room, if I read that question, the teacher's using his iPad for sure. If I'm not. If I'm not standing like this, I may not check that, yes. Because I don't know that they actually have their iPad pulled up over on their desk. Because their desk is usually not up at the front of the room. It's over in the corner. So I may actually be using my iPad to present that material when I'm up in the classroom. So I may not be carrying that iPad around. So some of that data could be skewed a little bit that way because we gave them a laptop and an iPad and a huge projector in lots of ways. And we don't necessarily see the building process for that lesson. They built that lesson the night before, the week before. So we're not seeing the lesson building. We're seeing what they're doing in the classroom itself. And that may be walking around.
Oh, well, it also may be, you know, we talked when we initially did this, that the students are going to become the teachers. Maybe that's what's going on too.
And that could be. That's a, that's a great observation.
I just wondered if you noticed any efficiency in the teachers or the students' use of the iPads? I know you first start with a subject or at the beginning of the school year. Maybe it, it takes you longer to do the same things that you get more familiar with later.
Takes less time in the hour.
Is that a goal or...
I don't know. I think the teachers are becoming more efficient with the use of the iPad. I think they're getting on to that. The thing that, as I look at this, we're still seeing the students. If I walk into a classroom, I look to see if the students are there. And I walk around the room to see if they're actually working on what the teacher wants to learn. So we're being, I agree with Casey, probably the preparation was done ahead of time and the teachers are becoming more efficient at it. So we're not actually seeing them use the iPad, so we're not recording it that way. So we probably have to come up with a better at how we're recording what's going on than actually seeing the teacher with the iPad out and working on it.
But it's forcing us to be reflective in our practice.
It is.
I would advise them where the teacher has done the students opened your iPad to certain page. She didn't have an iPad. She was telling them what to do and they were all on iPad. So I mean, she never grabbed the iPad, but she was giving the instructions and they were following her.
But you think it's more of a reality in our classrooms. They know their lesson's law and those, especially if you've taught it three or four times. But you don't need that feedback break in the end to just teach the lesson.
I was in Mr. Cruz's classroom the other day and it's amazing how fast the kids can change from one app to the next, to doing things. Mr. Cruz keeps, he's cruising. He's just moving along. And our kids are just keeping right up with him. And I'm a lake. I couldn't do that. I couldn't. And they're pretty well adapt to that.
I guess we have some informational...
And the most fun topic of all. That's me. This is the first year that we've differentiated some disciplines specific to iPads. And what we did was we added an FYI, which is a foreign information referral that says FYI hyphen iPad related. And so if the teacher is documenting, the student didn't have his iPad. It wasn't charged. It was broken. Then they'll write up an FYI and I'll review it and determine whether or not I need to call the student in or just keep it as documentation. But so far this year, we have had a hundred ninety-nine iPad FYIs. And only a hundred fifty-three students of those one hundred ninety-nine. So what this tells me is only forty-six students were repeat offenders. So that would reflect that, oh, they might forget at once, but it doesn't usually happen again. And then I had to do a little more data digging. And that is so far this, up to today's date, we had a total of one thousand five hundred and fifty-four discipline referrals. So of those one thousand five hundred and fifty-four, a hundred ninety-nine of them are iPad-related. So that is, you know, about thirteen percent. It's not too bad. The discipline is pretty typical. I mean, we document other behaviors, not necessarily iPad-related. If a student has a picture of marijuana or something on their iPad, that's documented as a drugs or other offense. We're looking at the behavior. Because they may have had that in their notebook as well and we wouldn't document it notebook, you know, marijuana notebook. So it's just the behavior that we're looking at and then how can we correct those behaviors? But essentially after that first warning, we're not having very many repeat offenders. The numbers do reflect the numbers of the academies. I have the highest numbers in my academy. I have the highest number of iPad-related FYIs. Freshman would be next. Public service and arts and communications, that's a little flipped and reversed. But the arts and communications electives are the higher number of elective classes that use the iPads. So any questions on discipline?
I mean, it's not unexpected, right? Because we're teaching cyber citizenship.
Yeah, we are. And what we're really working with the teachers on is taking an iPad away doesn't necessarily change the behavior. So what we really have to target is what's the cause of the behavior and address that. I had a teacher the other day that said so-and-so's failing English. Can we turn off, lock the iPad down? I said, well, why is so-and-so failing English? Is it because he plays games all the time? No. Well, then that isn't really going to solve the issue of changing the grade or...
I'd also like to say in the discipline, I've seen teachers who went from the point where they said lock everything down, lock all tech down, it's terrible. And I think some of y'all went to some meetings that way. But now I've seen teachers just handle it very efficiently. Lock it, take it, you're on again. Close your iPad, give it to me. It's not even a referral. The teacher handles them in the classroom. It's clean, cut, and it's smooth. So again, I think our numbers will be down because of how teachers learn how to function in a classroom with a new technology.
We're trying to do the opposite to you. Like if I lock a student's iPad down and then that student raises his or her grades, I try to document a positive referral when I unlock it. So then they get some positive behavior supports as well. They're encouraged to good behavior.
Some other things we're doing, we, just from our point of view on the tech side, is when Renee gets those FYIs and we go to restricted kids iPad, we started this year a little more kind of cut dry with those kids. We've got to start to come right away, just to kind of let them know that we need to be on task. There is a purpose for this device in the classroom. We want it to be used that way. And so I think kids learn very quickly that we mean business. We want you to be using the iPad for what it's used for. And we don't have, we're not opposed to games. If you're playing games in lunch or playing it when it's appropriate, then great. But if you're not, then there's consequences for that. And so we kind of try to, the nice thing about it is it gives us the opportunity to work with those kids and talk to them and say, this is why we're not doing what you're doing. And trying to teach them those lessons so they can kind of not be those repeat offenders that we talked about. I think our numbers are lower because we're, you know, whether it's us or whether Renee's got them in their office and they're deleting games. It takes a long time to delete twenty-five, thirty games off your iPad if that's what you've got. So that's a good opportunity to discuss with them why they're having to delete all those apps and games off their iPads. And that gives us some time, whether it's us or whether it's her or one of the principals, to kind of have that conversation with them going, this is something we should work on. We took some numbers. Our email average is about twenty-one thousand emails a day. That could be student, student, staff, student. That's all of our people that work in that building have a Gmail account. So that's, that's kind of an average. It fluctuates quite a bit when we, and I'm looking at those numbers. It's kind of all over the board. Some days it's twelve thousand, some days it's twenty-three thousand. It's kind of up and down. So we kind of averaged that out. We are making fewer over-the-air announcements and more one-on-one iPad announcements. So if I'm a coach of swimming, I'm not blasting out emails to the whole student body. We've taught teachers and...
I don't know this one.
Coaches and...
Counselors.
Counselors. We've taught a lot of people how to make those themselves. Sorry, I drew one. Somebody wanted to know. How to do that themselves so that we are sending those announcements. You know, last year, baseball canceled, no practice. We'd sent everybody in the school. Well, pretty soon, kids quit reading all the emails. And now kids aren't getting any announcements because they're, they'll just delete them when they see they're from me or Sam from Coach Adobi or something like that. So we've kind of trained them to kind of cut back on that. Parents surveys, we did those electronically this year. Last year they had twelve responses. Out of two thousand kids, had twelve students represented. Three of them are in this room. Parents responded. Four, maybe. Four, four in this room. So this year we had, that was an increase. We had over two hundred responses at record. So up two thousand percent increase just in that year to year. We'll continue that trend to kind of get that information back from parents. It's the same survey they use in everywhere else, but it would be a better representation by school.
I think another benefit, or another, something that if I, this, we talked about this one. I mean, parents are now, have a device to get on and look at their kids' Skyward and see the grades and get on eBackpack and see what's going on. And I think there was a decrease in the attendance at parent-teacher conferences. But I think part of that is the increased communication using the iPad so that the parents can also know what's going on with the kids' school.
We did all of our iPad-related forums and plus or restraint forums. Those required forums at the beginning of the year, we did all this eBackpack. So kids could sign, parents could sign electronically, turn them in, just to cut back on the amount of paperwork we were having to shuffle through and to get it done a little quicker. We did that over about a week versus, you know, taking over quite a bit of time to get all that stuff turned in. Lessened the amount of stuff they had to do at enrollment as well. We did our homecoming voting again electronically. About two thousand pieces of paper probably is a low estimate, the time doing that. We also did all our surveys. And there are a number of things. These are just some of the highlights of ways that we're trying to increase that communication with our staff and their students that are in their classrooms. But we want to highlight just a few of the highlights that we've done this year. I think they're being used on a regular basis for that communication. So we have a couple of questions for you.